Is not present yet. Would you mind calling the roll? Just for a moment.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Eggenberger on her way. Commissioner Foster on her way. Commissioner Janowski.
Here.
Commissioner Lee will be absent. Commissioner Singh.
Did you, were you able to contact him, Patrick?
I just texted him.
Okay.
And I'll let you know if he replies.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Singh is absent. Commissioner Watkins.
Here.
Commissioner Weber here and Chairperson Zuber.
Here, thank you.
You can't have your stuff there.
Please, thank you. All right, do we have anything to add or delete from the agenda?
No changes.
Okay, very good.
Motion to approve the agenda as stated.
Sorry?
Motion to approve the agenda as stated.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Weber to approve the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, and then any communications, Patrick, that we should know about?
None that we've received since last meeting.
Okay, thank you. And public comment, anybody want to talk? Sir, I'm sorry, the gentleman in the back actually raised his hand first, but we could, that's fine. Mr. McCoslin, go ahead. Okay, sorry. I was like gesturing that, not very clearly. Please state your name and address for the record.
Leander Richmond, 46477 Swanmere Drive, Canton, Michigan. I have a question, it's going to be a contentious one. Your tree ordinance, it was twice ruled unconstitutional. Okay, and that was a few years ago. You are still enforcing that tree ordinance in full force, except that now you don't put the money into the tree fund, you put it into the general fund, which makes it a little bit harder for people to locate what you're doing with it. What I would love to know, I just watched you pledge allegiance to the flag and you spoke of justice. I'm going to ask you, is it justice to enforce something that has been ruled unconstitutional? And I know that I've spoken to one of the planners and I heard that, well, we've made some changes. One of the most disturbing defenses that I heard was that the court did not rule correctly. We did not present our case correctly. Our attorneys screwed up. That's not a defense. I would love for someone from here to call up the court and say, hey, Judge Hubbard, you screwed up, so we're still enforcing this tree ordinance and see how that works out for you. It would be very bad. So I'm asking, why is this community still enforcing a tree ordinance to the tune of, and I have two of them on my phone, I filed a FOIA request, after looking through four of the 20-something folders, I gave up, I said, forget it. $429,000 to one company, another company was a Singh property, 460-something thousand dollars. This was the same mess that got you guys in this situation. The gentleman that came over from the University of Michigan, I heard him pontificate, and I swear he sounds like he's had more time teaching than he has practicing law. He sat, I think it was in this room, and explained to you guys how you didn't present your case properly. You have an expert from the University of Michigan giving you advice that disagrees with rulings involving 15 judges, and that's bad. That's no way to run a community. I also heard someone ask a question, and I apologize, sir, but why is it that the state can pass a speed limit sign, put it up, and give someone a ticket? Because they are vetted by an entire body, Senate and Congress, a financial study and review. Your tree ordinance, as admitted by the gentleman from the university, it looked like you pulled it right off the internet and changed some words. That's why. They have to be vetted properly. Now, one last piece. You can have a tree ordinance, but you must first determine a need. Do you have a shortage of trees here in Canton? No, there's no shortage. That's the way most things are done in this country. So I'm going to leave it there, sorry. I'm going to leave it there. But I would love to know why you guys are continually enforcing this thing and taking people's money and forcing them through the process when the courts clearly stated that you cannot. So that's all I have, thank you.
Well, first of all, I don't think this is the body, sir, I don't think this is the body that you need to address that question to. I think the appropriate body is the township board to address that to. We are not the enforcing body of the township, so what?
That's your planning commission right there. They handle.
No, we're the planning commission.
Well, you guys are the planning commission, but don't you guys determine whether or not trees are in or out or?
No, that's not this commission's job.
His name is on every single one of those things.
He's the planner, he's not the planning commission.
Who does he work for?
Works for the township.
I'm confused, thank you.
You.
I don't know what there is to be confused about. We're the planning commission.
The planning commission.
He is.
He's the township planner.
Township planner.
Yes.
He's responsible for reviewing site plans, preparing zoning ordinances as directed by legal counsel. What comes before us is what is directed by ordinance that comes to us, whether it's a site plan review, a special land use review, zoning change. We are a recommending body to the township board. We don't make or enforce the law.
And I sign and authorize and review permits for tree removals, and since those lawsuits, I do them often in conjunction with our township legal counsel, because what the court cases did not do is invalidate the entire tree ordinance, Article 5A of the zoning ordinance, didn't do that. Permits are still required, tree surveys are still required. It doesn't mean an absence of mitigation, it means that our formula for mitigation, as it applied in those cases, was not lawful. So we have review criteria that are in the zoning ordinance for tree removal permits that were not stricken down by the courts that we continue to use in our evaluation of tree permits. So when there are questions of mitigation, there is an option in the ordinance to use the formula that's there. Other mitigation options can be considered, and when they are, we work with our attorneys to review those and to see if there's something that we can move forward with. So until we update the ordinance with something different, when we have tree permits and the mitigation is in question, we work with our attorney in those cases.
The person who presented, I was unable to be here, my mother had brain surgery that morning, so I wasn't able to be here. But the person who presented, my understanding is he was a professor of planning, not a lawyer, is that incorrect? He's a lawyer too?
He's a lawyer.
Okay, then I stand corrected, thank you.
The, can I respond to that?
Please do.
The rulings both determined that if there was an expense that the township wanted for itself, it had to be borne by the township and by the entire community. That is what invalidated the tree ordinance and nothing else. So you still want the trees, but you're changing words around to continue to get the landowners to pay for them. That was what the ruling was, and no amount of word shuffles and we consulted with our attorneys is going to change that. That's the ruling.
Are you an attorney, sir?
No, sir, I'm not. I'm not, but I did read the rulings and I was heavily involved in this case from day one.
How were you involved?
Matt and Gary Percy are my business partners in my trucking company. My office is two doors down from Gary Percy's, and I do a lot of FOIA requests and studying. I did go to school studying law enforcement, but nowhere near finishing. So I understand how laws work.
Just curious, just curious. But just so you know, and I'm not going to get into debate with you as to what was struck down and what's still valid and all that, we are, at least what we're advised of, we are in the process of adopting a new tree ordinance that will be hopefully compliant with how the courts ruled and that sort of thing. It's quite lengthy, it's quite, it's a process. We will be discussing it a little bit tonight, but not at length, I mean, but that's coming.
But my question was, if you don't have that in place now?
No, we do have, but we do have a tree ordinance in place. The whole ordinance was not struck down.
Okay, thank you.
And as I said, if you want to know where the money went, I think you need to address that question to the township board.
Thank you. Mr. McCoslin.
Hey, good evening, Dan McCoslin, 328 North Hare Road. Hey, here for the same thing, looking that there was a tree ordinance and the master plan. Master plan's been going along great. Aaron's been doing a great job keeping everybody in touch, nice and transparent. Hats off to Aaron again, hard work. The tree ordinance, I think we should take it the same way, slow, steady, look at it. I think like the gentleman said, when he came to the study session, that gentleman left us with more questions than answers, because he said he was an attorney, but he couldn't represent us, but he wasn't given legal advice, but then he would start saying how the court case was wrong. To me, it came down to, it was about the money of the trees, not about the actual tree. And that's where I think he even admitted that, that it was about the dollars, about the trees, not about replacing the trees. I think that's clearly what, I went back and read, that the judges said the property was rendered valueless because of the cost of the trees. So tree ordinance, nice and slow. I think, I don't think there's anybody looking to clear cut land, you know, that's just looking to, you know, but I think we do have a lot of non-qualified trees that could be cleaned up in different sites and maintained and forested, not just clear cut and raised. So I think you guys got the right idea, nice and slow study.
Thank you very much, I will watch the video. Mr. McCoslin.
Robert McCoslin, 2011 Last Road, again, to echo, I don't want to echo what my brother had said, but, you know, Michigan's a big state. I think it's a big enough question, it should be asked at the state level, and it should be a state question. And if it has to be put on the ballot, put it on the ballot.
What has to be a state question?
How we control, how somebody would regulate your land, cutting, clear cutting, cutting.
Thank you.
Well, think about it, everybody's got tree issues.
What I was going to say is, it has been addressed at the state level, it's called the Zoning Enabling Act. And each jurisdiction in the state has the authority to adopt laws that regulate land use and how things are processed in the state within each of their jurisdictions. You know, if the tree ordinance has gone, has been litigated, it's gone to court, there's a portion of it that's been ruled unconstitutional. That process is ongoing and the new ordinance is being worked on, but it doesn't need to go on a ballot.
We spent a lot of money on that, adjudicating that.
I don't disagree, and I was.
And whose money was that?
I can't tell you that answer.
That was taxpayer's money, and it was a waste, it was a waste of the taxpayer's.
It's all the taxpayer's money, Mr. McCoslin.
Right, I understand. I wish, I wish other boards and commissions would take that same and say, hey, not only is it the guy's property, it's his trees, and now you want to charge him additional funds because he wants to cut some down that, quite frankly, should be cut down. We don't have a forestry division in Canton, do we?
No, but we do have a long agenda, so I'm going to thank you very much for your comments, we heard you, we did, so thank you. All right.
And I just want to apologize for coming late, I completely forgot that it was at six o'clock, even though we discussed it just a week ago.
That's okay, Commissioner Weber called the roll and he is going to get you back somehow, don't worry. He's assured us, he's got retribution planned.
I would like to apologize as well, I had COVID last week, so I missed the meeting.
So you're excused, anyone who wasn't here last week is excused because they weren't, they weren't wearing a chapeau.
They weren't part of the conversation.
Commissioner Cruz and Commissioner Eggenberger, that's another story, though.
I was late.
You weren't the one that asked for it to be at six?
I know.
Okay, moving right along. We have no public hearings, we have some old business, we have the master plan discussion. Aaron, tell us all about it.
Hello, everyone, thank you for coming and coming early today. So want to, that wasn't meant as a jive, I just meant, so want to dive right in and just give you a quick summary of some of the sections that we've looked at. And again, this came to you, and all of the sections that we're going to be discussing tonight came to you in an email last week, and the PowerPoint presentation is provided for you up at your seats. So we looked at a number of sections over the last couple of meetings, so this is just to give you an idea of what we've looked at and let the public know that we've been working at this and really swimming through some of these hard-headed topics. So for tonight, we have six sections that we're going to be discussing, existing land use, a SWOT analysis, which is looking at the strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities and threats within the community, housing and neighborhoods, our draft future land use map and draft text, redevelopment-ready communities, or RRC, and commercial corridors and infill development. And before we launch into anything, does anyone have any questions or anything that they would like to discuss at the forefront? Cool. Okay, so this is our existing land use map, and this is built off of the land use map that was done in 2021, 2022, when the leisure services division updated their parks and rec master plan. So we went back through and looked at some of the tweaks and things that needed to be adjusted due to new projects that have come through, so this one was done this year in 2024. So we've kind of talked about this before, we expanded the land use categories, whereas before, community facilities encompassed everything related to the cemetery, parks, schools, township buildings, et cetera. Now we've built that out and expanded it more, so that way you can see exactly what each land use is going to be used for. If you compare it to the previous existing land use map that was done on the previous master plan, there is less agricultural, there's more residential, more industrial, and on this one, we have specifically identified vacant properties. The existing land use section dives into these categories and explains what's part of each one and some of the land uses and some of the land types that are included within each category, for instance, office, you know, that can encapsulate anything from a professional office to a medical or dental office. Single-family residential housing talks about the density, the different types of park or green space and what can be occupied there. So we really go into some depth and the land use totals of each one are provided. And the agricultural section I found particularly interesting just to showcase how vastly the makeup of the community has changed over the last couple of decades, so. There really isn't much to discuss or dive into analysis-wise, because this is just giving you a snapshot and a picture of what the community looks like today, but if there are any questions or any issues with this draft, or if you identified something on the map that maybe isn't quite right, I'd love to discuss that.
I have a question, I love the description that you have here, the table that shows what percentage of the township is each type of land use, and I noticed that mixed use, there are a grand total of 1.34 acres of mixed use totaling seven one-thousandths, is that correct?
Yes.
Where are those 1.34 acres?
Um, let's see, they're really hard to see, I actually had our GIS specialist highlight that map for me because they're so small and the mixed use.
Oh, that's not one parcel, it's a few.
Color, no, there's a couple of them and they're really small, so if you want, I can send that to you separately, there's like four or five, but they're really, really, really tiny, yeah. I had her segment that out so I could see exactly where they're located.
Curious, you don't have to send it, I was just interested.
Okay.
But certainly would love to see a lot more mixed use, so, yeah.
Isn't that what Cherry Hill is supposedly created as mixed use?
Some of that is included in Cherry Hill, but it's not all of it, because it's not actually being utilized as mixed use. It might be planned that way, but it's not being used that way. This is how the land is being used currently.
Excellent, thank you.
Anything else with this one? Moving right along, excellent. Okay, so as part of our community engagement, and we've already looked at a section related to our public engagement strategy and what we did and who we talked to, but this kind of delves into it a little bit more, and I thought, you know, with each section that we talk about or each topic related to housing, the corridors, we do specifically target or specifically identify and explain some of the feedback that we got from the public, but this was such a poignant exercise that we did with all of our stakeholder discussions and a lot of our group activities, that I thought it was important to include as a separate chapter or separate section within the public engagement chapter. So just wanted to highlight some of the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities. So looking at the strengths, people liked the school district, they liked the convenience, the proximity to the major cities, Detroit and Ann Arbor. The weaknesses, the roadways are always going to be a concern here in the community, and we get into that in a lot of detail when we talk about the transportation section. But the important parts that we wanted to look at were the opportunities, because those are things that are ways that we could turn a weakness into a strength. These are programs and pathways and things that we can do and things that we can build upon that would transform a weakness into a strength. And the threats that we identified were things that could occur that would prevent those opportunities from becoming strength. So we really wanted to highlight those, that feedback that we received from the public because it was so important. And what I found especially poignant, and I include this in the text, is that there were far more strengths and opportunities that people identified than weaknesses and threats. So that just demonstrates that people do care a lot about this community and they want to see it improved. So there was a lot of excitement and voice of excitement, for lack of a better word, for moving the community forward. They didn't see it that where there were so many weaknesses or so many threats that were detrimental to the future of the community, they still see this as a viable place to live, work, play, et cetera. So that's just something I wanted to highlight because I found that particularly poignant. Is there any questions or anything you'd like to discuss about the analysis?
I thought it was interesting, I thought, I thought what some of the people called out as weaknesses of our community were interesting, and I liked a lot of the list that's included under the opportunities. I definitely think there's, there is plenty of opportunity here to make improvements and to make it a more livable community, I'll call it. Not that we're not already, but just to improve it, make it more attractive to newcomers and existing residents as well.
Especially enjoyed number four, the weakness, not enough parking.
Yeah, that was one, that stuck out to me like a, so I'm serious? Have you been to Myers?
Well, if you go to Cherry Hill Village. You're going to see that in a lot of communities, in every community I've ever worked in, there's always someone who doesn't feel that there's enough parking, but, and maybe in some cases there are, but I mean, you look at Ford Road or Michigan Avenue and the sprawling parking lots in front of Walmart, and that's not true. But a lot of times, it is the perceived feeling that there isn't, or the perceived thought that there isn't enough parking, which just means that we need to do a traffic or a parking study in Cherry Hill Village, that's something we were talking about and doing, and looking at opportunities to either create more parking or sign it better, so that we people know where it all is. So taking something where someone says not enough parking, there's layers to how that can be incorporated and turn it into a strength and say, there is parking, there are places to go. Or if there's not enough parking, are there opportunities to increase our multimodal, non-motorized transit opportunities, more sidewalks, you know, bus stops, those types of things. So we can look at it from a number of different ways.
We should probably get buses before we get bus stops.
If you build it.
We got to stop, we.
Chicken or egg, I don't know.
We're talking car course here, I think.
The other, the other comment about no downtown area, I always find somewhat, I always get a little bit of a laugh out of that because that's not what we are. I mean, we're not Plymouth, we're not Northville, we're not, and I think you have to be careful, I know, I know what we're trying to do in Cherry Hill Village, and that's a little bit different. I don't, even though that will be a quote-unquote downtown area, I don't think necessarily is the downtown area that people think about when they, but I hope we never get into the idea that we're going to create a downtown area. Other communities like, similar to Canton have tried then not been successful. I think it's one of those things that if you're a community that has that, that amenity organically, like Plymouth does, I think, I think that's, you need to latch on to that and you need to make the best of that. I think we need to embrace what we are and improve upon it that way.
I agree. Sorry, go ahead. No, I was just going to say, I agree with you to a certain extent, but, I mean, do you think that Plymouth or Northville, who have like a traditional, I think that you would call a downtown, got there organically, or like they had intention to build it, right? And so I think for us, our intention is to build out Cherry Hill Village, and like, it's different, right? But the intention is to drive people there, to drive economic development there, to drive, you know, teenagers there to want to do things or young adults, but I think there has to be intentionality behind it, and I don't think it just happens organically.
I would disagree with you about Plymouth. Plymouth has, that park in downtown Plymouth is the driver for their downtown area.
Right, but, I mean, there was intention around creating that space that became a community, at the center of the community.
Yes, but you can't just, I mean, Northville struggled with this for years, I mean, Northville has a downtown, and they, I maintain that they've tried to emulate Plymouth for years by creating a park-like area, I think that was part of the driving, besides COVID, I think that was part of the driving force of them closing their main street, and that's where I think to drive activity and that sort of thing, and it hasn't really developed that way. I think they've gotten back now to realizing what they are and what they have and taking advantage of it that way. I just, I mean, I look at a city like Novi, Novi tried to create a quote-unquote downtown area, and it failed miserably. It's not, what's left of it is basically is like a glorified strip mall now, has some townhouses and that sort of thing. I just think you have to be careful how you do it. You know, again, Cherry Hill Village, we are fortunate with Cherry Hill Village, I think that we, that, and don't get me wrong, Cherry Hill Village did not turn out the way exactly it was planned originally. I mean, it's kind of gone through some different ebbs and flows as far as what it's going to be, and I think it's starting to come around to what we originally envisioned now, but it can be created, but I just don't think it created like, like we think of a downtown area, like whatever the case may be, I mean, I just, I don't, I just, I think you just have to take advantage of the resources you have and you make the best of it. So anyway, that's just my comment.
And if I may, the notion of someone saying they want a downtown, like I said before, with the no parking, you can look at it a number of different ways. So just because someone says that they want a downtown doesn't mean that we are going to say, oh, well, we need to do a Plymouth, we need to do an Ann Arbor, we need to do this, because we are where we are and we don't want to replicate. We do have Cherry Hill Village, so that's something that we can, if people say they want the downtown, that's something that we can cultivate. And it's also a matter of making sure that there is marketing, there's branding, there's promotions, there's things to do that will cultivate that kind of downtown atmosphere in Cherry Hill Village or elsewhere. You have to look at it, the township has to look at it in a complex and a complete viewpoint, a complete, under a complete lens. Just trying to do what Novi did, and I remember when that came to fruition, because I grew up there, they didn't, they just said, okay, well, if we build it, they'll come, and they didn't put any additional investment into it. So they didn't do the programming, they didn't do any additional marketing, they didn't go to the next step, they just built it and thought it would thrive, and it did not. So we don't want to do that here, anything that we build or anything we invest in, we want to make sure it's a continued investment, a continued programming, a continued model to bring in economic development and new businesses.
I think, Patrick, you could probably correct me if I'm wrong, is with Cherry Hill Village, I think the whole package was envisioned when it was first thought of and created, you know, you had significant residential area and then you had a commercial slash downtown area, and. And the commercial never really developed, for whatever reason, whether it was the economy at the time, or whatever other factors there were. Now maybe that's changing a little bit, but I, I think the original development of Cherry Hill Village as it, as it came was just heavily, heavily, heavily residential. And I think the original plan kind of got lost a little bit. Hopefully that's coming back around, but...
Yeah, it was heavily residential, but it also didn't have like a programming, or like a village arts factory, or like the therapeutic rec or any of that. I mean, they had the village theater, but I think looking for ways to drive people to that area will help economic in the...
I have a question real quick. So with these weaknesses, we've been going over this stuff, you know, for a long time now. These are, is there any way in your planning to define these further? Because like roads. So do we have record of the folks that made these comments, that you can gain further data? Because a lot of these are unclear, you know, too much housing development, specifically, what are you speaking of? Lack of wayfinding. And as you said with the parking, maybe it is Cherry Hill Village, or maybe it's somewhere else, but you can't identify and propose a solution to the problem if we don't, the, the problem hasn't been stated clearly.
Yeah, so in, with this, these all came from our stakeholder discussions. So this was an analysis, or this was an exercise that I, that I did with each one of our stakeholder groups. There was 15 of them or so. So when we'd ask them, what are the strengths of the community, what are your, what are your perceived weaknesses? You know, they did say roads, and so we would kind of have discussion as to the follow-up of that, but it was, it was an all encompassing thing for a lot of people. It was the traffic, it was the maintenance, it was the repairs. It, all in one, people felt roads needed some attention. So when we get into the transportation section, that's something that's heavily identified. I can speak more to that in the intro, so saying that these are things that will be discussed later and...
So this is just a highlight, you understand where the parking is, hence?
Correct.
Okay, okay, perfect.
Yes. This is just giving the, giving an idea as to what people were saying when you asked them the broad question. And then so when we start talking about the topics, housing, corridors, et cetera, then we say, remember when we said people said that they didn't like their roads? Well, here's some ideas of, of how we can turn that weakness into a strength, and working with Wayne County. But that's, that's for next, next meeting.
Right, but you understand that. So when they say like, there's not enough parking, you know that that's at actually that specific area, Cherry Hill Village. That's what they told you.
Yeah, I don't think anybody is saying on Ford Road that there's a lack of parking. I...
Or maybe there's somewhere else. I don't know where the, yeah, I agree with you, but, okay.
So when we talk to the, when we delve into the Cherry Hill Village section and, and do the analysis on how this, how Cherry Hill Village in and of itself came to be, what are the challenges, what are the assets of the area? Then we do make point of, people say that there's not enough parking. Well, you know, we'll look at that, we'll do additional study. People, you know, the wayfinding signs would work in these areas to draw people to the area, blah, 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 blah. So those are, those are things that are discussed in more detail in the, in the specific chapters that, for which it pertains.
Thank you.
Anything else related to the SWAT analysis? And all of those discussions were really fun. I had a, I had a lot of good, I had a lot of fun doing the, that exercise with, with the stakeholder groups. Okay, so now we're getting into our first big topic of the night, where we discuss housing in neighborhoods. So I just want to give you a brief summary of what is talked about in, in the chapter. So we talk about the existing conditions, so there's an analysis on the number of housing units, whether it's occupied vacant, housing stock, owner occupied versus rental, the types of housing that we have, the housing value and housing affordability. And a lot of these are compared to other communities in, in the immediate area. So you can see kind of where we are compared to Westland, compared to Ann Arbor, compared to City of Novi, et cetera. Then we get into, there's a section there related to community feedback. So whereas the SWAT analysis kind of gave a, a large view, this is very specific related to housing. People felt that they came here because it's a desirable community, there's high quality dwellings. The appearance of their neighborhoods, they found as a, as a bonus or as a plus. There's housing affordability for, for them when they, when they came here. However, they did feel that there were limited housing options. There was the single-family residential, and that's it. So they had stated that their housing type preferences, that there was enough single-family, they would like fewer duplexes, triplexes, or manufactured homes. And then there was a mixed opinions on accessory dwelling units and microhousing. So as part of this section and as part of our future land use, we do have areas on the future land use map that could be utilized for residential. We don't have any areas that are specifically called out for additional manufactured homes. We have seven manufacturer, manufacturing home parks here in the community. So we don't feel like we need to add more at this time. And with mixed opinions on the ADUs and microhousing, there were some people that said we had, we needed more of it, and there were some people that said we had too much. Well, the fact that we don't allow it at all, you can't have too much if we don't have any. So to me, what that says is that maybe some people don't know what that means or how that can be implemented without being detrimental to their neighborhood or their home values or something like that. So while we heard about those mixed opinions, that's also something that could involve additional study and additional research on our end to see where that could be, could be viable. And then as an ordinance or as, as a policy comes to fruition later down the road, after the master plan is adopted, we can do some more public outreach and see what, what they think about these, in these particular contexts, right? And then we looked at housing trends. So we looked at the existing conditions, what people want, and okay, what are, what are some of the trends that are popular either in the, the area, throughout the state of Michigan, or even nationwide? And as always, location, 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 that's, that's always a big one. So there's nothing more to say about that. A lot of people feel that there's an outdated supply. So they want a new home, they want something that, that they can live in, but everything that they're looking at that they could afford is outdated and needs a lot of upkeep. There is a shortage of affordable housing, so that's something that needs to be addressed, and housing prices. Now, we can't make any declarative statements here in the master plan or township board policy about what people are charging for their homes, either new developments or people selling. That's not the, the purview of township. But what we can do is try to work with developers and try to encourage opportunities for either mixed income developments, or making sure that things stay more affordable for people, for all people to come here.
Madam Chair, if I could, through you to the planning team, I, one of the things that I did notice in, in looking at and listening to all of the, the planning exercises, and I've done it probably at a 50,000-foot level, was the housing piece kind of comes in, it, it comes in missing one specific component, and that is the juxtaposition between the housing stock and the Plymouth Canton Community School District. And I'll tell you what I mean. Many years ago, I'd say roughly 15 years ago, the school district under, they kind of trimmed the fat and they closed some schools. They took an opportunity to right-size the district in a proper way based upon the attrition patterns, right? Like, how many kids are leaving elementary school and going to middle school? And how many are leaving middle school and going to high school? Those patterns have changed considerably, and I wasn't sure if the housing piece contained and had that analysis from PCCS as we look to other developments that are happening. Let's take for instance, the corner of Denton and Cherry Hill. We've got an empty parcel there that belongs to a developer, that could, he could possibly put a couple hundred more units there. Okay, let's, let's take for instance, let's say that there are gonna be 50 to 70 more children that'll be going to Workman and/or Dodson. How does the housing piece line up with PCCS? And how they look at their inventory? I know this is like, seems like it's way off base, but I thought about it in a great way, in that it might be something that we've narrowly looked at. Personally, right, I had three kids that were in the district. They've all since, they're, they're transitioning now. Got one in high school, got one that's going to high school. But there's so many families that have moved in now that have multiple children. Now that we've downsized the schooling inventory, I mean, the, the assets that are with PCCS are the enough schools. And then do we make sure that we don't move in too many people and there are not enough schools for them to fit into? Just by way of knowing, Workman is packed to the gills. Dodson is packed to the gills. All the elementary schools are just crowded. So that says to us on this board, how do we think, how do we walk circumspectly as it relates to further housing developments within the framework of the township? I just wanted to point that out and see if maybe I'm missing something as it relates to the school district. Thank you so much.
Can I just add to that point? I think when the school district did that study, I want to say, oh, maybe 20, 2015, something like that? And they looked at Wayne County birth rates, and they were declining. And, I mean, I have no idea what they are now, but they looked and they said, we've got too many elementary schools, and then they transitioned some of the schools into like the tag program or early, early elementary. And then looking at the middle schools, they recognized most of the middle school students were in Canton and not in Plymouth, and they only had Discovery Middle School in Canton. And I have no idea how it aligns right now, or like what the projections are in terms of birth rate. And I don't know, like, I think that's a school district thing, and I wonder if they're doing another study or thinking about how they are allocating their resources, or, I mean, I don't think they're planning to build another school right now, but like, is the setup going to remain the same? Is, is it still gonna be the tag school and the early elementary development? Or do they need to rethink how they did that? And even they rezoned the schools back then, right? So if they need to rethink that, so you don't have like Workman overloaded, but not as many kids at Field, or you know, something like that.
I know, I know when they closed Allen, the discussion at that point was that they just did not see the growth rate of the student population for the elementary, or the incoming families to warrant keeping that elementary school open on that side of the district. Obviously, and obviously that's an older portion of the district.
Yeah.
So all the development's gone to the west. But I guess the, the point is somewhat to your question, Commissioner Watkins, is it appears that at one point there was consideration of how the two aligned, but whether that's lost now, I, I don't know. I mean, we, as, as we go through this master plan, we talk about wanting to see reinvestment in some of the older portions of the community for, for affordability purposes a lot. And those would be, and those, in theory, those would be people who would want elementary school close to their home and that sort of thing. So I think your point's well taken, that, you know, maybe there does need to be some communication with the school district about where they're, you know, where they're thinking. Maybe they need to, you say the study was done 10 years ago?
Yeah, I want to say it was 2014, 2015.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was actually when I was on the school board. And I can assure you, there's a lot of conversations that go on about where, where are things being built? How many houses will there be? What type of houses are there? So they are well aware of anything that, that we are discussing in terms of units coming in, but...
And it's not just PCCS, right? Because we've got Wayne Westland School District, we've got Van Buren Public Schools.
Right. Of course, the conversation is, how long do you want to put them on a bus? Where do you want to have the kids go? I will say that one of the things that I learned, one on the school board and having all these conversations, is that there are some states that require the developers to build a school. If they're gonna build a neighborhood of a certain number of houses, they have to build the school, which is not the case here. And so every year it was a bit of a, how are we gonna do this? How are we gonna fit everybody in?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, and the last point of this through, through the chair was, when you start to think about it from a development standpoint, the performer says, who wants to buy this at what, at pricing point and what school district do they want to live, do they want their kids to go to, period? Right? Is it, is it Van Buren? There could be a pricing point for that. There's a pricing point for Wayne Westland. And then in, in an incredible sense of the word, there's a pricing point for PCCS. So how do we, how does a developer understand what our planning efforts are and how that matches what someone wants to buy, and how they make their money juxtaposed against what schools are there? So I want to make sure that lens is, is here. Sorry about that, I didn't mean to sidetrack our conversation.
Oh, I agree. But we know the developers know that because they sometimes tell people that they're gonna be in the Plymouth Canton schools when they're not.
Right, I've heard that.
They do. We've had a lot of people come to the board that were very upset and trying to figure out how they could get in our schools.
Not good.
No.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, thank you.
And as, as part of this master plan, we, we did not, we reached out and we talked to students as part of the public engagement. We did not reach out to the school board in and of itself. We are not in the business of telling the district how many schools they have to, to build. They do their own master plan for that, and they're, they do their own analysis. We can reach out to the individual school districts and see what their projections are, and that might be something we can build into, just as a point of reference. But that's not, we're not going to be recommending that the school district build 16 new, I just, throughout 16, elementary schools and five middle schools and a new high school, because that's not, that's not within the township's purview.
But it's a good question to ask, like, like Commissioner Watkins said, you know, to think about where we're building new housing and where we're, you know, where the, the school districts are planning to build new schools, or, or downsize schools or whatever, it's important to know.
And part of the, the existing land use section does note the, the educational component and the educational uses, and how many, how many schools there are, and the three different school districts that exist within Canton Township in and of itself. So that is mentioned in the existing land use, but we can, we can look at it and try to incorporate some of that language into the housing section, just even as, by point of reference.
Thank you.
Anything else to discuss right now? Okay, so when we looked at the housing and neighborhood section, there were a number of questions that we wanted to consider. How can Canton remain competitive as a home community? What type of housing are people looking for? Square footage, number of rooms, what's, what's the priority that they want here? Are there sufficient variations of housing types to fit all needs and wants, and does Canton need more diversity? What types of amenities are people looking for? Schools, events? As I said, when we did all the public engagements, we heard that the people came here or looked at Canton because of the great school district, or because, because of the summit, because of the festivals that they have. What, what are the underlying, what are the other reasons that they're coming here? Are people able to live in Canton for their entire lives? Are they coming here as children, and then they, when they have their own families, they want to live here? Are they able to continue to live here as seniors? Are there places for them to go and to age in place when they don't want to live in a two-story 2,500 square foot home? Is Canton affordable for all income brackets? Are we, are we inclusive? Are we allowing, is everyone allowed to come here no matter what their, their socioeconomic status is? And is Canton accessible for persons of all abilities? Are they able to get around? Are they able to buy the homes that they want and live in the neighborhoods they want? And are they able to move around as they, as they need to? And are there sufficient and safe connections from door to door? Meaning, are there ways for them to get from their home to their neighborhood amenities, to, to their work? To, I mean, that's kind of like a, a transportation corridor section, but it all, it all works, works together. So here are some strategies that we have based on our community engagement, based on the housing trends, based on what we heard, and to answer some of the questions that we just posed, here are some strategies that we've included in the master plan that we want to consider to make our housing options more feasible for people of all, all ages, all incomes, all, all abilities. And what are some of the neighborhood amenities that we need to, to look at and to incorporate? So the big one is consider new housing types, accessory dwelling units and microhousing. We've talked about these before, so we can go into these in a little bit more detail if you like, but we've, I know we have talked about this. Opportunities for more senior housing facilities, or opportunities for people to age in place. This can be something as simple as building an entirely new senior housing facility, or trying to find ways and help, help residents who are currently living in, in our community to make the modifications to their homes so that they can continue to live in the home that they love and in the neighborhoods that they, that they want to. Are there opportunities, or is it possible to look at mixed income housing developments? You know, if, we, this is a question that's asked a lot when projects, especially single-family projects come before this body, is what are you gonna charge? What is, what is the price of, of these homes or of these units that you're, that you're... What is, what is the price of, of these homes or of these units that you're, that you're, you're marketing? And for a lot of times, and we've heard it in, in our department and through our discussions, it might be cost prohibitive for a lot of people. But you want, you know, the newer, the newer, the flashier, the, the updated appliances and the really nice fixtures, it, the cost goes up. So how are there opportunities to allow for mixed income units within an overall housing development? Preservation of affordable housing. So this is an opportunity to connect residents with federal programs for assistance or to keep things that are more moderately priced for people who can't afford a half a million dollar home. We want to, a strategy to consider is to review the zoning regulations. Exterior building materials, we've talked about this one before. As we all know, brick, brick is expensive. So are there opportunities to allow for a mix of or alternative building materials that do not sacrifice the aesthetic or the value that we want here in Canton? Another one is the minimum floor area. This kind of goes hand in hand with the micro housing. But currently, all of our single family residential zoning districts require a, a minimum floor area for, for the homes, either with or without a basement. So this requirement, if someone is building on a three, three acre parcel, they may have to build an 1,800 square foot home. But what if they don't want an 1,800 square foot home? What if they want a 1,200 square foot home? What if they wanted a 600 square foot home? Why, you know, looking at the reasons why the minimum floor area is the way it is and maybe, maybe considering alternatives for, for those types of things. Now, this doesn't go in line with the, the sprawling developments that, that we look at here. Those are a little bit different because they're PDDs and those are things that are looked at in, in more detail. But it's, it's mainly for the vacant parcels, someone who wants to build a, a regular home. The micro housing is usually set up as a less than 500 square foot or less than 600 square foot home. So the minimum floor area would, would fill the gap or the, the middle part from the micro housing to the, the standard single family home that, that Canton is famous for. Neighborhood collaboration, ensuring that there's an upkeep of the neighborhoods and facilitate open communication for, for, for the future. So we have a fabulous and wonderful ordinance department that makes sure that the, the neighborhoods are well maintained. There's a lot of homeowners associations here in the community that also do their due diligence to make sure that those neighborhoods stay updated and they stay viable for, for the future. And then we have, the township facilitates open communication through their resident know-how meetings, which are conducted several times throughout the year. And it's an opportunity for residents to come in and talk to the township and say what they feel is going on in their, in their neighborhood or questions that they have. So that way there's more direct one-on-one contact and not, and they don't have to go to the board to get those, those questions. It's more of a, an informal discussion. So we certainly want to make sure that we keep up with those neighborhood collaborative efforts to keep, keep in tune with our residents, make sure we know what they need. Because the, the needs and concerns in Sunflower Village are very different than Sherlock, not Sherlock, Sherwood Grove, the manufactured homing, home development that's on the south side of the township. So those are very different needs and concerns, right? So we want to make sure that we can still facilitate that so we know what each development or each residential area needs. Increased connectivity to neighborhoods and commercial areas. We've, we've talked about this before and it's included in our corridor section, which we'll be talking about a little bit later today. And it's opportunities for the neighborhoods to be part of the overall community of Canton. So instead of having their neighborhoods where everything is, is segmented off and then there's these commercial or these cinder block walls around commercial developments, finding opportunities to allow for the neighborhoods and the commercial areas to coexist. And allowing and facilitating movement between the two. This can allow for families to navigate from their home to the commercial area where they could go get dinner. Or they could do a little shopping and they don't have to walk along Ford Road or Canton Center or in some areas where there are sidewalk gaps. This, this can increase the connectivity and the cohesion between the neighborhoods and the commercial areas. And finally, addressing missing middle housing, this has to do with the neighborhood nodes and the infill developments. I know you guys are really excited to talk about nodes, so we're going to be diving into that again for six hours tonight. This is the only mention of nodes in the entire presentation, so.
Nodal Nancy is here.
Through the chair, real quick, can you, would you take Erin in just a second to kind of redefine missing middle? I, I know what Mish, Mishda gives as the definition. Would you kind of go through that so that, just for the group?
Yeah. It's an opportunity to incorporate housing on scaled, kind of scaled developments so that they fit in within the context of like a single family residential area. But it's more dense and so it allows for connectivity and walkability in those, in those types of areas. So if we incorporate missing middle housing, it's duplexes, it's triplexes, it's cottage developments, things that fit within the context and look like it could be a single family residential, but it's more dense than that. But it's not the apartment high-rise that, that others might think.
And at its basic level, on one end of the spectrum, you may have your detached, single family home, your least dense type of housing. The other end of the spectrum, you may have the high-rise apartments or any apartment building, and that's going to be our most dense form of housing. The missing middle is everything in between. So those types of housing that Erin mentioned, all those types of housing that's between your typical apartment and high-rise and between your detached, single family home.
Okay, so these are the, this is one of the, sorry, the neighborhood nodes that we talked about. So we've seen this one many times before, but this just gives you an example of, of what we're talking about here. So we have the, the covered parking, the residential on the second floor. We have the townhomes behind, but the commercial component is really the, the highlight of the, the area. Secondly, the infill development here with the potential for these two middle buildings just south of the, the green area could be residential on the second story and retail commercial on the first floor. So this is just a visual representation of how, how that could be incorporated.
Can I, can I ask a question real quick? And this isn't pertaining to nodes, going back to the type of housing and, and that sort of thing, and particularly the question of affordability. When we're, when we talk about affordable housing, can you clarify what we're talking about here? And I, the reason I asked the question was, I, I was reading an article in the paper today about a new development that's going on in downtown Farmington. They're tearing down an old building to create development of townhomes and such. It's right in the downtown area. And I forget who the developer, I think it's Robertson Brothers now that I think about it. And in the article, they're quoted as saying, creating affordable housing. And they talk about the price point of those townhomes and they're talking about mid 300s for a townhouse. And I'm thinking, okay, that's not really what my definition of affordable is, but maybe I'm, maybe I'm, maybe I'm missing the boat on this. So I, what, what exactly are we talking about these days in terms of affordable housing?
Well, affordable housing is a moving target, right? So it, it really comes down to what each person feels that they can afford. We have some text in the housing chapter related to housing burdened. And I think that's more of a relevant framework to look at that. Because if you spend more than 30% of your monthly income on housing, then you're house burdened. So that's not an affordable, that's not affordable housing for, for that individual. Looking at it across the board, we're not going to be able to determine what's affordable for everybody. Because everybody's level of affordability and their income varies too greatly. What we want to do is try to make it as inclusive as we possibly can so that it hits as many price points, so that people can come here and they don't have to, it's not exclusively $500,000, $500,000 homes. There's the lowering the square footage and, and changing the cost of the building materials and looking at alternate areas and looking at ways to incorporate other things can bring down the cost of the house or cost of the dwelling unit. And so these are measures by which we can say, this is what we're trying to do to make them more affordable. Whether they're affordable for everybody, we can't really determine that.
That's, that's exactly right. And I think we have to be careful about how we use the term affordable housing then. Because you're right, what's affordable to one person may, may not be affordable to another person. But through this exercise, we've read a lot about providing for, or Canton lacks, or, or what, affordable housing. Again, and like you said, that probably means something to, different to every, every person. Maybe the better way to phrase that then is just what you just said, is about providing for a diversity of housing from at all, at various income levels and that sort of thing, rather than using that term affordable housing. Because I think the term affordable housing also to a lot of people has a bad connotation. Not, I mean, I'm not saying that's, that's right or wrong. I just, I just think it does, because I think a lot of people think of, when you talk affordable housing, they're talking about federally aided housing or things of that nature. And that, that can be one part of the equation. But I think some people lump that into that, that overall concept and think that's what it is.
Yeah, we do, we also include in the text some definitions and some explanation towards attainable housing. And so a lot of times people have switched their, sorry?
That's good, attainable housing.
Yeah, so we've switched because a lot of people do take a negative connotation or, or look at affordable housing in a specific lens and they say, we don't want that here. But attainable to them might mean something a little bit different. But we'll, we'll look at that language and see how we can make sure it doesn't put us in a position where we, that we don't want to be. So I'll, I'll look at that a little bit more carefully.
Yeah, I, I, like I said, I like, I like the phrase that you used of diversity of housing is, is, is the, is the way to put that.
I have a question about the, the two unaffordable cost maps that you have included. And I'm a little confused by what they're trying to say here. Are these areas, so, so I looked at my neighborhood, which is right across the street here and it's.
Which, which map are you looking at so I can pull it up?
Households with unaffordable costs.
Unaffordable, okay.
It's page.
27.
Oh, thank you.
I'm pulling it up right here for everybody.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. 27 and 28 in the packet. So are we talking about the people who live in the bounded areas? Out of those people that live there, this many are burdened? Well, I'm not sure I understand what the legend means here.
Within the, within those designated areas, those, that is a percentage of households that have, with the unaffordable costs. So if you look at the southwest or the southeast corner, east of 275 by Van Born and the railroad track, there's no houses there. So that's why that is the way it is. Closer to, let me see if I can.
Well, like, for example, I live, I live right across the street. So that, that little beige area on your map, which looks more chartreuse on mine, but, you know, Sheldon, between Sheldon, Cherry Hill, Canton Center and Palmer.
Okay.
That is.
Right here?
No, up, up and over to.
Oh, right here?
There is part of it, yeah. I mean, I'm technically on the other side of Sheldon.
Here, okay.
Right about there. Yeah, so zero to 10% of the people living in my neighborhood are housing burdened.
Households.
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 Yes.
In my, okay, yeah, sorry, yeah, I meant households.
But, but yeah. That's a low percentage in that area.
On the other side of Canton Center from there, it looks like that is 25 to 30%?
Yeah, that's a higher percentage.
So that means those people are house poor then, is what you're saying.
So they've really, they've really stretched out, okay.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
That is also a housing trend because everything, because housing prices are so high, it's showing that predominantly people, they may be able to afford to live in their homes and they can afford to put gas in their car, but they're not going on vacations, right? They're not doing things above and beyond their basic necessities because they are house burdened.
Okay.
It doesn't mean that they're not paying their bills, it just means that they're, they're stretched.
No, I understand. I was just confused by the, the boundaries around these areas and, you know, just wanting to understand.
So that, that's looking at income? Is that the, how are they just income versus their housing costs?
And the housing, housing val, housing costs, housing values, mm-hmm.
I think a little more explanation would be helpful.
I'm writing that down. I'm going to make sure that that's explained a little bit more in the.
I spent a lot of time looking at that going, huh? It's just, it's not individual.
They did analysis through the census blocks. So this is broken down by census blocks.
It's interesting that the highest percentage of the house poor people are kind of in these older areas of the township. This north east corner of the township, like Holiday Park area. Down here in where it's heavily industrial and you have the, the, it just, and I don't know the reason for it necessarily. It just, it's just interesting how that lines up.
Well, one of the reasons might be that if these are older neighborhoods, there might be people that have been living there for long periods of time and they're on fixed incomes, right? Which has not, has not changed based on, you know, housing costs and other costs. Yeah, that would, that would be one, one reason that I would guess.
It's just, it's just, and it's just, like I said, it's just interesting how that lined up.
And especially if you look at it in terms of the older neighborhoods that these are showing here, then it does actually demonstrate that putting, putting community members and putting residents in touch with federal programs or even state or county programs to help offset or mitigate some of the costs to update their home with the senior accessibility, like the, the handlebars in the showers and, and things like that. Those are things that would be prudent to, to promote here in the community.
I saw a note somewhere in one of your slides, though, Erin, too, about, and I have no idea, I haven't thought this through, but I think it's incentivizing people to invest in their homes through updates and that sort of thing. Because like, like I said, this, this one area that I'm looking at here, there's a lot of, of nice homes that probably just need updating, like in this area up here and, like, I'm, I call this Windsor Park area up here and that sort of thing. I mean, but that's just an older community. Some of the homes are very nice, but there's a lot too, they're getting a little rough around the edges and that sort of thing. So if there was ways to help people up beyond just federal programs, I know we talk a lot about that kind of stuff, but if there's other creative ways that were found to get people to reinvest in their homes, I think that would probably change that statistic quite a bit. Just, again, just opinion.
Yeah, I, I just want to, so I'm in the minority here and I, I know I'm going to catch some flak, but I always want our property values to stay high. So, you know, my focus is on healthcare, culture, recreational spaces thing. That's why I joined the planning commission, to make sure these, these aspects make our community desirable. The property values are a product of that. Us trying to insert a cost for a home is difficult. It's precarious. This area commands a certain value and our property taxes reflect that. So it, it's hard for me to agree with, you know, let's put an affordable housing and make a, a price point less in a very desirable community. So I just kind of want to, I, I know people don't agree with that sentiment, because I've heard it here, but I want to state my opinion on that.
And that, and that's absolutely fair. And one of the strategies that was included in here, let me go back to the PowerPoint, was to, mixed income housing developments. So that's a strategy that we can look at and, and put in the master plan as something that we want to study and see if it's something that could be possible. That might not be something that comes to fruition for any number of reasons. But certainly something like that could be looked at through a PDD process as a community benefit. So just allowing some of that flexibility, not necessarily that we're going to require it, but we can encourage and we can try to direct some developers that are coming into the community saying, hey, look, we want to be, you know, we want everyone to come here. Is there an opportunity within your scope and within your performer to allow for a, a mixed income? But certainly we, we don't want to say nothing about, you can't charge anything above X because blah blah. I mean, we might as well just go to court right now.
I don't think we ever said that.
Yeah, we're not, we're not going to do anything like that. It's just exploring. It's just exploring ways that we can incur, or we can encourage developers to allow for, for mixed incomes.
I think within the community itself, if you look at the different developments, there are varieties. And what you're talking about doing, or the communities talk about doing will help that further. So if you look at, you know, you're more towards Michigan Avenue, we're on the other side of Michigan Avenue and they're starting to develop those areas, those houses are gonna be lesser entry points compared to certain areas that are further out towards golf courses and stuff.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, I've heard people comment that we want housing that our, our kids graduating from college can afford, you know, in Canton. And I don't think we want, you know, like, to talk about how much landlords can charge or, or property developers can charge for new homes. But we also want to make sure that there's a housing, there's housing stock for, for our kids who are, not that I have any, but you know, for our, the kids that are getting out of college now that can afford to pay.
And certainly houses that they can afford, but also that are updated, right? They might be able to afford something, but if it's, you know, if it doesn't have modern amenities, then it's not going to be something that they want to live in. And so we want them to come here, we want the people to afford it and they want, we want them to be happy with, with their choice too.
I remember having a conversation with teachers and for the longest time, teachers that taught in our community grew up in this community. They went to school, they came back and they wanted to teach. And one of the things that they said to me is that they want to live in Canton, but they can't afford to live in Canton. So I think we, and I agree with you, Alan, like, I don't want a certain price point, but I just want a variety of options for people who are professionals to be able to make a home and raise their families. In Canton, everything doesn't have to be half a million dollars or seven hundred thousand dollars. And as far as like the, the tax base, we have a great tax base in Canton. But keep in mind, we also have the lowest tax rate in Wayne County, and I think a lot of people don't realize that.
Well, and I, just to, you know, to comment too on Commissioner Cruz's comment, you're right that the healthcare facilities, recreational facilities, entertainment opportunities.
Car washes, don't forget car washes.
Yeah, well.
Or storage.
Storage places. Oh, absolutely.
Storage slash car wash.
Maybe you need to come up with that, maybe you need to come up with that one. All absolutely play into the, how our property values are affected in a positive way. So I agree with you also in, in that, that comment. And I share Commissioner Foster's comment is I, you know, I don't think we're trying to put a price point on housing. That's why I asked the question about what we're talking about, when we're talking about affordable housing and why I, I kind of don't like that term.
I like the term you used, diversity.
And I made a note here that, that all includes into some revised text that certainly any of these strategies that, that we're talking about or anything that we pursue here is, is going to be to the betterment of the community and we want to protect the existing and, and continue the upward trend of, of housing value. So we're not trying to, to deter from any of that. And I'll make sure that I, I note that more specifically in, in the text as well.
I remember, just real quick, graduating from college, I knew I was limited in what I could buy. And I ended up buying a condo in Canton, Hunter's Grove. It was my first place. And I knew it was an investment, I barely got by. And property appreciates. And then you buy another home and it appreciates more. So I, I like the idea of younger people trying to get into Canton at a lower price point and then staying in Canton. And I love those ideas.
Yeah, we certainly want to foster that, for sure. So these are some of the strategies that we've mapped out in our text. Before we move on to the next topic, is there anything that we've, we've noted here as a strategy that you do not want us to pursue or you do not think is viable to include in the master plan? You do not want us to go forward with it?
Nancy.
Yeah, nodes, nodes.
No nodes.
Node, node Nancy.
Do you want me to just delete it, delete that? Okay, so is there anything that maybe we did not cover that you think we should cover in more detail? We, I do have on here about the master plan for the school district, so we'll, we'll make sure we reach out to that. I'll explain the household maps better, affordable diversity, ways to update homes and noting about protecting the property values. But is there any other strategies that you think that we should pursue as part of this master plan that we have not covered? Or maybe started to cover but not in depth?
Yeah, we touched on HOAs and, and having been involved in the, in the government, governing board of my HOA for a while, we tried to update our bylaws. And the reason we were updating them was to, it was fairly innocuous. We wanted to eliminate all references to the developer, twenty years after the developer was done. And we also tried instituting some minor penalties for people, some monetary penalties if people didn't keep their property up. And we could not do that. And it was because the developer had set the, the bar so high for how many people had to agree on changing the bylaws. And we went door to door, literally. The people on our board went door to door and emailed and called. And we just could not get, because I think it was like an eighty percent or ninety percent, you know. So I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about HOAs staying relevant with any changes we're making to zoning ordinances, like if allowing ADUs, you know, if, if they want to, they may not even be able to because they can't change the bylaws. So is, is there anything we can do when we see these developments come before us to look at what their bylaws are saying and encourage them to not quite make it so impossible? I don't know, you know, what, what our role is in that, but.
We don't have a whole lot. And, you know, with our master plan, with our zoning ordinances, we can say, you can have ADUs, you can have sheds, you can have swimming pools and you can have fences. But the individual HOA has to make the determination of what they want for their neighborhood.
But I mean, I mean, when the developers come before us with their, their paperwork and everything, can we?
If they build it into their master deed, that might be something that we can recommend. I don't know, I'll have to defer to Patrick a little bit on this. But, you know, if they change or update their bylaws, we don't monitor those from the township level if they do it after the fact. So they could prohibit them in the future and then set a threshold later on, so.
Yeah, I understand that. But I mean, like, when they come before us with their, all their.
I'm gonna defer to Patrick on that because I don't, I don't a hundred percent know that answer.
Well, looking nationwide, because housing is, is, has become a nationwide problem, there are some states that have passed state laws that prohibit single family zoning and have allowed ADUs by right. And a state law would supersede, you know, local bylaws. They can write that into state law to do that. I don't know if anything like that may happen in the state of Michigan because with HOAs having those types of restrictions, that's not a Canton problem. There are thousands throughout the state that have that. So looking at it from a statewide problem, it is something that the legislature could choose to address. Locally, our subdivision ordinance and our condominium ordinance, they're not in our zoning ordinance, they're in our general ordinances, which makes them police power ordinances. So it may be a question for township legal counsel, if we were to amend our condominium ordinance or our subdivision ordinance within those police power ordinance, ordinances, could those supersede local bylaws? That would be a question we could bring to them just to see to what extent it could. Because it, right now, we talk about ADUs, but we could be talking about something else in the future. We could be talking about architecture, street trees, lighting.
We could talk about, I mean, we can't hang laundry out to dry in my backyard because the, the HOA prohibits you from putting any clotheslines out. I don't know that they, they don't enforce it, but, you know, that's kind of a silly thing, you know?
Well.
I think actually, wasn't that included, Patrick, in the state law that recently changed about HOAs?
I heard that it was, and that's a good segue.
Clotheslines, yeah.
But, but, Dawn, wasn't your question?
For energy savings.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, and solar panels, I mean, I know, you know, that's been discussed, but, sorry.
Well, I thought more your question was, before the HOA is fully written and the development is created.
Right, when we're seeing them.
Do we have a say in what that HOA is gonna be?
Thank you, yeah.
We do. The master deed and the bylaws, they are approved by the township. And when it comes to development standards like that, where their development standards go above and beyond the zoning, oftentimes, not just Canton, but many communities take a little bit more of a hands-off approach, like prohibiting outdoor laundry, because it's one way of the community saying, well, we'll defer to the local community and if you want your subdivision or condominium to have those restrictions, that's up to the owners and they can go and change it. So.
Like I said, that's almost impossible, but yeah.
Yeah, one thing might be to look at perhaps the number. If we can put it in the ordinance that, you know, a change of the bylaws shall not exceed a certain number, maybe not fifty percent, but.
It should be a majority, definitely, you know, sixty percent. But then, I think that was part of what we were trying to do, was get the number lower that we needed to get. Because we, I mean, people just aren't home, you know, but, or people don't own, don't live in their home, they're renting it or whatever. You know, there's just so many reasons, so. They don't bother to vote, they don't think it's important, they don't care, whatever.
And I've got these two questions written down here, so we'll email Foster Swift and try to get a, a better handle on how that, how that could work.
Just one trivial thing about it, since we brought up HOAs, I noticed, and I can't remember which document, I saw it in, Erin, there was reference to the over one hundred HOAs in Canton, but there's actually over two hundred.
Well, it's not wrong.
No, but it's quite a, it's quite a discrepancy.
Exactly. It could be writer.
Like I said, I know it's trivial, but.
Especially, I mean, I'm thinking about those new trashcans we got, that not everyone can fit in their garage because they have their boats in there and stuff, but, you know.
Point of word about, I have thoughts about those trashcans, but I'll hold my comments until a later date. Back in the hands of the chair.
Thank you. I think we all have thoughts about those trashcans, but anyway. Okay, please proceed, Erin.
So are there any other strategies that we, you, would like to consider? Or like more information on things that we didn't cover or things that we missed? Feel like we, we should identify.
We're just talking about housing tonight, right?
This is just housing, yeah. Okay. Then we'll move on to the next one. Okay, so this is our draft future land use map, and you've seen this a couple of times before. But as we continue going through, you know, I like to bring up these types of big things, like especially the nodes, infill development, the future land use, a number of times because each time you look at it, you might come at it from a different perspective and you might see something different. So this way, we, we have as comprehensive of a review of these, these big items as we possibly can. So this is the draft future land use map, and I know that the, the legend is really small there, so that'll get, that'll definitely get fixed. So a couple of things that we did here compared to the previous future land use map is, again, we expanded the, the land use categories to include schools, the ITC corridor, manufactured housing, the landfill, cemeteries, parks, golf courses, et cetera. We've showcased new concepts, the nodes and the innovation boundary and the special planning areas, which are identified in the table there as well. The removal of the corporate park overlay district, excuse me, and then a return to a low density residential. And so the next couple of slides have these areas circled, so you can see where they are. Again, these are things that we, we've talked about. So these are the neighborhood nodes, they're either the parcel or the intersection nodes. So you can see where, where they're all located. The innovation boundary and the special planning areas, so that's all located along Michigan Avenue. And then each special planning area is identified in the table and that's the, the type or the name. And that corresponds to the draft future land use text that was also included in your materials for discussion this evening. The other one is to remove the corporate park overlay district and extend the central business district along Ford Road, north and southeast of I-275. This, that was included in the previous master plan. It wasn't done, but as you know, being on this body, there's been a number of applications over the past year or two that's kind of poked holes in, in that CPOD overlay district. So we want to continue on with that, with that thought process and, and remove it and extend the CBD. So that's not a new concept, that was carried over from the last one, but we'll, we'll do it this time. And then finally, this is, this area here that's circled. In the last master, master plan update, this highlighted area, the, the light, light yellow, was changed to a low density residential, which is one dwelling unit per one acre. But based on public feedback and reaction and discussion, we have proposed to move this back to a rural residential, which is one dwelling unit per two acres. That would be the max density in these, in these areas. Okay, so each category and each concept here, especially the planning areas and the nodes, have been described and provided some example land uses that could be applicable in these areas. So all of that has been provided for you in the text. I'm happy to go through any one of them or all of them, however you see fit, there's a lot of categories here. So some of them have a lot more depth or, or meat to it, like Cherry Hill Village or the special planning areas and the nodes. There's a lot there because especially the innovation boundary and the special planning areas and the nodes, these are new concepts for this master plan. So we go into great detail with it. Things related to the educational or the ITC corridor, some of those areas don't need a whole lot of explanation, so those are a little bit lighter in the text. But these are all the categories that have been included in the future land use, draft future land use map, and I'd be happy to discuss anything that you might want to talk about.
Can you blow up the legend a little bit, Erin?
Pull up the legend?
Or blow it up so I can, so, I want, I want to see something.
Yes, I, yes, I can do that, yes, I can, okay. Yep, no, I just, my brain wasn't working for a second, but it, it started to fire, so I got it.
It's a long day.
So.
So we have these.
Go back, no, go back, the legend.
Oh, sorry, the legend, I thought you meant the special areas, okay.
All right, so where is the, you, you had an area, you had an area that's talked about for utilities and such, is that, is it just the IT, is that just the ITC corridor?
That is, hold on. I think that just might be the ITC, or it might be just utilized as vacant. The, the utilities and telecommunications, that was part of, and then I think we discussed that more in the existing land use.
Reason I'm asking this is just talking to a, a number of people in conversation about the idea of developing Maine and that sort of thing and getting more high-tech uses. Depending on how that shakes out and the type of uses that we get, I think there's a feeling that another substation of, of some sort is gonna be needed in the township. And I'm just trying to think where, looking at the land use map, where that possibly lies. And granted, we don't necessarily want to dictate that as whoever constructs that, such a facility will have their reasons for wanting to develop it in a certain area. But I'm just wondering, as we talk about utilities and such, where that would appropriately be? I mean, I, I have my thoughts on where something like that could go, but as we're talking about utility areas, that's just one thing.
Okay, that's something that we will look at and try to see how we can incorporate that as a, maybe not specifically as a category, but certainly include it in the language of where those areas could be, could be located. That would be more ideal.
That's probably a better way to couch it, yes.
I'm sorry?
That's probably a better way to put it, yes.
Yeah.
Arpreet, you're being so quiet this evening. Are you okay? Okay. I don't think you've said anything.
Not yet.
You just did.
Okay, anything else with the future land use? All right, so the redevelopment ready communities, I don't have a, a slide here, I'm just kind of throwing it out as any question. So this section was provided to reiterate. So this section was provided to reiterate Canton's commitment to being a redevelopment-ready community certified, certified community, in which case we have conducted our baseline report, we have done our inventory of our processes and our level of transparency on our website. We are still in process of doing that, the master plan, and having a zoning ordinance that complies with that is, is some of the bigger, the bigger pieces. We are working towards some of the smaller pieces. And you've seen a couple of those things, like having bylaws and having a training schedule for the planning commissions, zoning board of appeals, those things have already been, been done. The redevelopment-ready communities section is just articulating the fact that we're going to continue with this to be certified and identifies a couple of priority redevelopment sites. So the Ford Road infill conceptual designs, some of the areas along the Michigan Avenue corridor for the special planning areas. So those have been included just as points of reference. So are there any questions related to this? More just background information and making sure we check that box, so.
Through the chair to, Aaron, so this is just kind of a rhetorical question, well, no, it's not. Looking for an answer for it. What does having the redevelopment-ready communities designation allow us to tap into? I think maybe we can share that with the members of the commission.
Yeah, so the redevelopment-ready communities is a program through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, the MEDC. And so having ourselves certified as a redevelopment-ready community, RRC, allows us to work with MEDC and doing cross-promoting. There's, there's resources and tools through MEDC that can help us spur on economic development. There's grant opportunities that we can apply for. And then there's a lot of marketing materials for, for our particular site. So if we want Michigan Avenue to be the, the research and the hub, the technology hub that we are envisioning and we're talking about, having a redevelopment-ready community certification and having those priority sites identified in our master plan allows for us to promote and market those, those sites to be developed how we want.
And we'll have state assistance with that marketing.
Yes.
Both nationally and internationally, so when they're trying to recruit companies, trying to work with companies, and they look at communities that are redevelopment-ready certified, Canton will be among those communities, and there are a lot of advantages that we have without being RRC certified, but this just moves us up in that list.
Makes us more, more desirable. It showcases that we have aligned with the best practices that MEDC has laid out, that we are a business-friendly, inviting community, and so it just gives us, gives us a gold star and a heads up for, from other communities.
Thank you so much, Aaron.
Anything else with RRC? Cool. Okay, now the last big, big discussion is the commercial corridors and infill development. So we looked at the existing conditions and what, what our community has. So we have two major corridors, Ford Road, which you, a lot of the area that, most of the area that we're talking about when we talk about Ford Road is the, within the DDA. And it's also part of the Future Boulevard project. Michigan Avenue, where we have started working towards the, the main plan. And then we have our neighborhood centers, where things are located at Canton Center, or on Palma Road, or Cherry Hill. So those are the, the neighborhood centers, so they're, they have kind of node-esque qualities, but it's not within the dense commercial, big-box stores of either the DDA or Michigan Avenue. Okay? So when we talked to the community about, about the commercial corridors and potential for infill development, they wanted to increase walkability, they want more shopping options, they want to develop a better marketing, or a marketing and a branding strategy, include wayfinding signs. There was a lot of people that we talked to that either didn't know where Cherry Hill Village was, hadn't heard of Cherry Hill Village before. So having some wayfinding signing, signs that would direct people to not only Cherry Hill Village, but to the summit, or to other amenities within the Canton community just makes us more, more viable and more, more friendly. Supporting small businesses, looking for ways to connect them with either grant opportunities or being supportive of any future development projects that they want to, to instill. Diverse building facade materials, this is something we've talked about before. So allowing alternative facade materials will bring out, bring down some of the cost of construction, will allow for the corridors to be developed or redeveloped in, in a more unique way, as opposed to being, everything being brick or stone masonry, it just gives it more, more viability. And future connections with public transit. This is something that we'll get into here, and we'll also talk a little bit more in the transportation section, but making sure that our corridors are equipped with future public transit, whether it's through a regional system or public opportunities for scooters, or bicycling, or sidewalks, you know, all those kinds of multimodal transit options. And then finally, we looked at trends, and I realized that I did not remove housing. So this is not housing trends, this is trends related to commercial areas, so I apologize. So we looked at shifts in the retail, restaurants, and entertainment industries, right? With the rise of e-commerce, certainly spurred on more through COVID, people relying more on big-box warehousing like Amazon, or people doing exclusively pickup or DoorDash-type of meal, of meal delivery services. It's changing the landscape of the retail, the restaurants, the brick-and-mortar stores. Delivery services, as I mentioned, looking at opportunities to plan first for your pedestrian, pedestrian-first planning. Instead of looking at a development and saying, well, how are these cars going to get around and make sure that they can navigate safely? Look at it from a perspective of how can we plan for the pedestrian first? How is the pedestrian going to get here? Either from the neighborhoods, or from, from across the street, from anywhere within the community? How is the pedestrian going to get into this place? Infill development, it's looking at opportunities for expansive and underutilized parking areas to be filled with infill development opportunities, such as mixed, mixed-use buildings with commercial and retail and restaurants on the first floor, second floor, maybe office, or residential. And then also creating the public, public spaces as we, we see in the infill development conceptual designs that were drafted for Ford Road. Opportunities to attract high-tech businesses, expanding transportation technologies, and making sure that anything that we do here in Canton, either through the development or redevelopment of a new success site, is sustainable. So implementing green infrastructure, low, low-maintenance practices. So these are some of the questions that we considered when we look at the development, redevelopment of our commercial corridors for infill. What makes a successful commercial corridor? How, how would, how to best attract new and unique businesses to Canton? And what will make the corridors attractive to business owners? Are there ways to install green infrastructure, stormwater management techniques? What type of amenities are people looking for? Events, oops, events, benches, walkability, what, what is going to keep them coming to Canton? What is going to keep them here as opposed to going to Ann Arbor, or Plymouth, or Novi? Are there sufficient connections from the corridor to the neighborhoods? We kind of talked about that one in the housing and neighborhood section, so we're talking about it here because it's all, it's all connected, right? We want to make sure that if you're in your neighborhood, you can get to the commercial area and vice versa without having to traverse along a major roadway like Ford Road or Michigan Avenue. Are the commercial corridors unique to other communities or other parts of Canton? Can you tell you are in the DDA? Are there areas where you look at and you say, wow, I'm in Canton, this is where I am? Or does it look like any other community, and you, you can't tell that you're, that you've left Westland? Or that you are in Plymouth? I'm sorry?
Can we put like a Hollywood sign up?
Absolutely, I, I'll make that down.
That's what we could do with the landfill.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could put it on, good point, we could put it on the landfill, we have our mountain.
Yeah, yeah. Or like the 275 where Auburn Hills, they have that big bell buckle. Yep, I'm in, I'm in it. Okay, and are there opportunities to expand permitted land uses in the corridor to allow for multifamily and allow for mixed-use developments? So these are some of the questions that we considered when we looked at our commercial corridors and how we can make them more viable, how we can attract more new businesses, and what makes them unique to Canton as opposed to other communities, either nearby or just elsewhere in the region. So we looked at design elements, we looked at the streetscape, we looked at the form, we looked at the use, we looked at the frontage, and we looked at parking. So these are discussed in, in more detail, and we look at ways that we can enliven and redesign. So when we look at, we have it in two separate ways. Enliven is to kind of, some minimal ideas that we can enhance the area, right? So you add streetscape, you add some benches, you add some, maybe some public art, or things like that. Whereas if you redesign, it's, you're taking something and you're making it completely different, right? So streetscape, you're adding public transit connections, right? Those things will take a higher level of public policy initiative, rather than just something that a developer could, could instill. So these are some of the design elements that we looked at within the corridors as ways to enliven and redesign the areas. Are there any other redesign elements that you think we need to look at in terms of development or redevelopment of a corridor?
When you're talking about design elements and such, have you had, have you had feedback from like economic development and the DDAs about, or the DDA about marketing and, and wayfinding in particular, are the things I'm thinking about? Because those, those would be, seem to be things that I think need to come out of those groups as opposed to being in the master plan.
Well, those are things that we want to promote within the master plan, and, you know, our master plan and the DDA's master plan and the Canton Chamber of Commerce, they'll all work together. So putting something into our master plan about how we want to create a marketing system, or a marketing plan, or a branding plan, these are just steps that we can do to try to bring attention to the corridor and what we want to do, because it's not just going to be about putting out benches, right? It's a whole, it's a whole comprehensive look of how we can reimagine, redefine, enliven the corridor. And all of that is going to come with marketing and branding. We have talked to the economic development manager, and during our stakeholder discussions, we did talk to the DDA. Unfortunately, we weren't able to talk to the chamber. And so we did hear from them that they wanted, that the marketing and the branding was, was important, as well as the wayfinding signage. So those are things that are already in the Canton DDA master plan. So those are things we just want to continue throughout our master plan to show that there's cohesion between the two documents and the, and the vision of the corridor.
Aaron, can I ask a question along those lines?
Yes.
So we have the DDA for Ford Road, we have the Chamber of Commerce, and who's doing a lot of that for Michigan Avenue? Is that us, is that the township board, is that?
You mean in terms of the branding and marketing, or the planning?
Yeah.
What are you talking about exactly?
Like the planning, so like Ford Road, the DDA, we have the mast arms for the traffic lights, we have the, the color-coded and the streetlights and the signage for when you enter Canton Township. We don't have any of that for like the Michigan Avenue corridor? So is that something that we would have to develop as planning commission? Or would that be the township board, or how would that work?
Well, right now, it, it, so as part of our master plan, we were saying that we are going to, or we want to align with the Michigan Avenue Innovative Network plan that's being, that's being developed. So those two can go hand in hand. Right now, community development and our economic development manager is kind of leading the team on the, the main plan and working with the adjacent communities and getting the, the analysis and the scope of that working together. I just got an email from them this afternoon that they're starting to, to move forward in their next steps, which is really great. So we will be working together with those things. The overarching responsibility of how Maine is going to come to fruition has not yet been established. But it is something we're keeping in mind, and right now, community development is the one that's kind of leading that effort. But we are working with them to make sure that what we put in our master plan aligns with what they're doing and what the other community, so that way we're all, we're all on the same track, we're all on the same road, going in the same direction, and we're not splicing off.
Thank you.
And we're also working with communities along the corridor. And so we're taking a regional approach as well. So some of the ideas that we put out there in terms of economic development, the type of businesses we want to attract, the type of developed character we want. And there are a lot of different tools that are available. One of the ones that we've looked at is allowed through the state called a corridor improvement authority, similar to a DDA but focused more on a corridor than a downtown. However, that doesn't work for every community along the main, because City of Wayne, for example, has its DDA along Michigan Avenue, and I think there's some prohibitions on overlaying a corridor improvement authority with a DDA. So looking at it from a regional standpoint, we're also seeing with our regional partners, anything we implement, how it fits throughout the entire corridor. It doesn't preclude other communities from doing a corridor improvement authority. It's just something we want to think about along the way as we're developing our plans.
And there is some text in, in the commercial corridor section related to the corridor improvement authority, and how if we were to establish that for our section of Michigan Avenue, it is exclusively for, exclusively for our section within our municipal boundary. It does not pertain to that which is in Wayne, or Dearborn, et cetera.
Thank you.
We own a lot of land, city owns a lot of land, commercial land. Developing that land in the coming many few years in master plan, do we look into going out of state investors, out of foreign investors? Is that something we should plan in the master plan, like?
Yeah, so that's where the, the marketing and the branding strategy kind of comes into play, and also the redevelopment, RRC, the redevelopment priority sites that I mentioned. By being redevelopment-ready certified and having that marketing materials, it allows our, not only our economic, economic development manager, who goes out to conferences and networks with, with companies, either local, regional, international, to promote Canton and promote the areas that we have that are ripe for their type of project, but also the MEDC will then, and the state will do some of that marketing for us as well. Anything else related to these design elements and enliven versus redesign? Okay. So here are some other strategies that we, we want to consider and for, through, for the master plan. Right-size the parking requirements, you know, as we know that we have a lot of underutilized parking in the areas. So for any future projects that are coming in, you know, we want to look at infill projects, and that's in here as well, but we also want to look at not carrying on the methods and the planning techniques that are from, reminiscent of a bygone era, where they planned for the automobile and everything else was secondary. We are trying to take more of a pedestrian, multimodal planning effort first, and then making sure that the automobile can fit into that, but it's not the dominant option to get to wherever you need to go. So right-size the parking requirements. Look at infill development within the parking lots, and this can be a phased approach. So we've seen the commercial developments in the four phases, four, five phases. We've, we've shown that to you many times before, so looking at those and making sure that those are prioritized. We have shown those to the DDA during the stakeholder discussions, our economic development manager has them as well. There's a lot of people who are excited about those, especially the, the green space and the infill for the park, or yeah, for the public gathering park areas. So there's a lot of excitement to take some of these expansive, underutilized parking areas and making them more of a public space. Creating public spaces for gathering events, outdoor dining. I know Chairperson Zuber, you have expressed your, your love and admiration for outdoor dining, so we're doing that all for you.
Thank you. Wow, yeah.
And as we've talked about before, marketing and branding of the corridors and the districts, this will just make things more viable for people to know where they are in Canton and that they're part of the Canton community.
Can we dedicate the nodes section to Nancy?
Nodes, yep, neighborhood nodes, here we go.
Neighborhood nodes.
Because it is alliteration with my name.
Yes.
That's, that's really what it's about.
Yes.
Incorporating mixed-use development, so instead of just being, you know, being one use, there, there's a mix, and there's a healthy complementary mix of, of things that can work, work together. And as we said before, allow for alternative exterior building facade materials. This will just make the corridors more visually appealing. It will reduce some of the redevelopment costs that might be prohibitive for some of the commercial business owners who can't afford to put all brick on there, especially if it's a non-conforming building of, in existence. This allows some flexibility there. Okay? Okay?
It also allows some creativity, in my opinion.
And creativity, absolutely. Some diversity of aesthetics and whatnot.
Don't get me started.
Okay. So these are the strategies that we've laid out in the text, and we go through, go through them all in, in a lot more detail in the text. But is there anything here that you, that we've laid out as a strategy that you do not like for the commercial corridors or infill development? Anything that you do not want us to pursue or include in the master plan? Okay. Yes.
How are they coming up with this corridor thing? I'm, I'm trying to understand it inside my head. The, you know, what attracts the people besides the airport and stuff like that? What's going to make people want to build and live and put their tech in this area compared to like, you know, what Automation Alley, for example, like you got out in Oakville County? I'm just trying to figure, in my head, it hasn't made sense. Maybe I just don't understand it.
Well, allowing for a relaxed zoning approach, so allowing for these types of research of, if you're talking about like on Michigan Avenue, allowing for or planning for and encouraging regional transit to come into the area. Our economic development manager has already been in talks with a number of high-tech type businesses to try to bring them here into, into Canton. So part of that is, is starting the conversations and finding out what people want. If they, you know, a lot of people, especially coming from out of state or even international, might be drawn to Automation Alley because that's what they've heard of. But wait, have you heard of Canton? Because we have this, you know? So it, it's something to try to drive and spur that economic development.
Well, I guess we do have some automotive. But out there, you have, you had Chrysler out there, all this stuff. You have the country clubs. You have all this stuff that attracts people in the areas, beautiful Metamora and stuff. But when I look at that corridor that goes down Michigan Avenue overall, it's not somewhere that I want to, want to go or be.
Yeah, but what if we put that Canton sign on the landfill? I mean.
I'm just trying to figure it out.
Yes.
But you need to, but, but you need to make it that way.
Right. So planning for it allows for that to come to fruition and, and the investment that we want to impart into that specific area to draw those businesses here. You know, they're, it's, it's going to start somewhere. It starts with a plan. It starts with an idea, and, and hopefully it grows and matures that way.
I think our biggest attribute in that regard is, is kind of where we are located. I mean, when you look at, we have two interstate highways that either go right, actually three if you count I-96 and M-4 slash M-14, three interstate highways that either go through or border our, our community. We're smack dab in the middle of two major airports. So I think, and then you have the University of Michigan and other universities downtown and that sort of thing, between, being between Ann Arbor and Detroit. There's lots of brain power here. So I think there's lots of.
I, I think the problem I'm having is, is the whole thing when I see the other communities that going up through, through Wayne and everywhere else that it goes. Canton, I, I think it can work with the housing and stuff, and you brought up some valid points.
Well, but that's our focus is Canton. I mean, I, I mean, well, other, I, I don't, and I've said this about this whole concept of the main is that, yeah, I'd, I'd love it if the other communities jump on board and, and follow through and join in this. But I, my, my focus is how it develops in Canton. That's, that's my priority. If Westland, Wayne, Inkster, all those communities can have the wherewithal and all of that to, to do it and, and be true partners in this endeavor, great. But, and I don't think we can necessarily wait for them either.
No, the primary focus on, on anything that we do here, and even when we talk about the, the main plan, it's how this pertains to Canton. Yes, we want to create and cultivate and foster a corridor from Detroit to Ypsilanti, Ann Arbor that is vibrant, that is cohesive, that is amazing. But if we start to implement some of these things that we want to do and Wayne, Westland, Inkster don't, at least we've got momentum to, to enhance our, our area. And maybe, maybe it'll trickle down to them eventually, but we can't force other, other communities to do something that they're not prepared for or don't want to do. We're trying to take a regional approach on this, but we're still, when we talk about Maine, we're still, we are still focusing on what we can do within the parameters of our municipal boundary.
I think the idea of a corridor, I guess maybe if I isolate the corridor, I was just thinking of being, going continually up, like you said, to Detroit. I just, doesn't compute in my head. It's another area, maybe, or something. I don't know.
Well, a corridor is, is kind of a, a loose term when we talk about the commercial corridors. We're talking about the dense, commercial retail restaurant areas that exist with, on, within Ford Road and Michigan Avenue. No, for us, Michigan Avenue is the entire span of the municipal boundary. But for Ford Road, we're really just talking about the eastern boundary to just west of Beck Road, right? No. Canton Center Road, sorry. So that's the commercial corridor, Ford Road, that we're talking about. Ford Road extends further west within the Canton Township, but we're not focusing on that as a part of the commercial corridor because that's largely residential. And our future land use map has not expanded that commercial density west than it, than the boundary line as it exists. So is there anything else here that you feel like we need to explore in these areas or that we need to talk about more or something that we didn't cover that should be included in the master plan here for these commercial areas and infill development? I don't have any notes on this section yet, so if I'm missing something, please let me know. Home run. Cool. All right. So that concludes the, the six topics that I have for tonight. So next time we meet, we're going to have, hopefully, the, the rest and the end of the master plan draft text. So we'll have the transportation section, sustainability, Cherry Hill Village, and the implementation and zoning plan. I think that's it unless I'm forgetting something really important. But I think those are the last four chapters that we have to look at. After that, everything will be compiled by McKenna. It'll look real pretty. All of the tables and the maps and everything will be in its final format. And then we'll bring it back to the planning commission, and we'll kind of start going through the formal adoption process where you then make your recommendation to the township board for distribution. It goes out for 63 days of public comment. So the public gets to look at everything that we've been doing and talking about, and they don't, they have 63 days to do that. And I know there's been a lot of interest in, in from the public to see what we've been doing, so this will be really exciting to show them. So they'll be able to, to comment on it. It'll come back to us. We'll dissect and listen to all the comments that we receive and make sure that, you know, did we miss something? Do we need to discuss something further? Or, you know, hopefully, they just tell us that it's the most wonderful plan they've ever seen and, you know, they're, they're excited about it. So.
I'm sure that's what will happen.
I know that's what's going to happen.
When you say next time, you mean our next, our next regular meeting?
Yes. The next regular meeting, September 9th, unless, is that looking like it's going to be a really busy agenda?
Yeah, it could be. We'll know in the next week or two. We have some public hearings.
That's what I was getting at.
If not, then we might, then we might separate it and give two chapters, two chapters, or I give you all four chapters, give you all four chapters for, before that meeting, and then we wait until the workshop to officially discuss it. So we'll, we'll work it out. But we're, we're in the home stretch. We have very, less than one hand. It's very exciting.
Awesome. I, I also wanted to say, Erin, I really appreciated you putting this all together into one document tonight for the, for us. It was much easier to review this week than last week.
Yeah.
With the different Word documents that you sent.
Thanks, Patrick, for that because that was, we can absolutely make sure we do that from, from now on.
Yeah. It just makes it easier to have it all in one document.
Yeah. And everybody likes things differently. Personally, I like it when it's separate documents. So that way I, I can see how many pages. And I'm like, oh, only six pages left. Cool. As opposed to 194 pages left. Okay. Never, so, but however you all like to see it, I'm more than, we're more than happy to, to distribute it and get it to however you need.
I, I don't know if this is, this is probably really in the weeds, but on the slides where you had a bunch of things that jump on the slide, I think there's a way that when you print the, the presentation, you just print each of those slides as one thing instead of 12 slides.
Yeah. I, I probably could have. I just didn't think about it until I hit print. And I went, oh, okay. Well, my, my presentation in the handheld didn't really line up.
For both, for both the, the one you sent us and the printed version, it would be nice just to have those as one.
Absolutely.
Just really, if that's all I can think of to criticize, then we're doing great. Thank you, Erin.
Is there any other questions related to the master plan? Either what we've talked about, previous meetings, tonight, or what we've, we've got on the docket for the next couple of meetings?
Will there be another joint meeting with the township board to go over the master plan?
There's nothing on the books right now for that. But if you feel that there's something that we need to discuss with the township board to get consensus before it goes to, through the formal adoption process, please let me know, and we'll make sure that we can get that done and, and scheduled.
Okay. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Yeah, thanks for being patient with us, too.
Yes. Sure.
Thank you for being patient with us as certain.
Yeah. All right. So we also have some discussion about the tree preservation and removal ordinance for Patrick. So.
Patrick's last.
His 200-page document on trees.
Yeah, it just says, it just, just a little bit of this tonight.
All right.
All right. It's right here in writing.
A little bit.
Briefly introduce, introduce the ordinance and discuss the review process ahead. However, given the length and complexity of the ordinance and supplemental documents attached, we do not anticipate a long discussion at the August 19th meeting. I'm just putting that in the record.
All right.
Brief, briefly.
More putting words in your mouth, too.
No, no, I'm reading his words right here. Reading him.
We're holding you to this, Patrick.
Well, I've willed it. So here we go. So it's the last 203, 204 pages of the packet. And the reason is that it, it's as long as it is, is we want to kick off the ordinance at, at this meeting. And actually, I think a more official kickoff will be at a, at a future meeting where we really get to go through each of the sections. We have a lot of information there, and a lot of information carries forward from last month's joint meeting where we had the presentation from the U of M team, and they summarized the report that the students did. So both the report and that PowerPoint presentation are in the packet. So those are supplemental documents. Those are documents that will carry forward throughout this process. We may put them on SharePoint. We may put them on the website just to make them easier to refer to. We'll try not to put them in future packets just to keep the number of pages in the double digits or triple digits. So what we've done really is just carry forward without any changes from the January, or January, the July joint meeting, including the draft ordinance that was distributed at that time. And it is a draft ordinance. We've spent quite a bit of time on it. It's probably longer than it will end up being, but that's a good thing. It's easier to take away than to add. And we purposefully did not put in calculations for different types of tree mitigation. We left things blank. We highlighted things because those are going to be the most substantial discussions. Those are ones where our staff is going to run different types of analyses. We're going to do different formulas and things like that, present them to the planning commission, get a feel for the type of mitigation. And we didn't want to insert something in the ordinance that may raise controversy before we've done a lot of that in analysis. The rest of it, you know, it's, it's fair game. But when it gets to mitigation and numbers, that could have effects based on whether it's acreage or a number of trees or land use or district. So we kept it a little light on that side at this point. So at, at this point, I'll end the discussion. We summarized the ordinance in terms of topic-based things and bullet points in our memo. A lot of this is reading verbatim as it did for the joint meeting cover memo. We just wanted to be consistent and have it carry forward. As we get more specific in the future, those memos will be shorter and more pointed. If we all remember when we went through the fence ordinance, sometimes we spent a lot of detailed parts of our meetings going through the fence ordinance. And when we look at the tree ordinance at future meetings, this cover memo will document what we looked at before. It will get into what we want to achieve at the meeting. And then it'll end by saying, here are the next steps, just so that one meeting can carry forward to the next. Also, we're not always able to be in attendance here, so for members that may miss a meeting, they can look at the memo and kind of catch up in addition to looking at meetings that are online and reading the meeting minutes. So having the cover memo will allow for continuity from one meeting to the next so that by the time we're at the end of this process, we'll have several cover memos. We'll have one that puts it in a bow that summarizes everything that we did at the preceding meetings, and then going forward with ultimately the adoption of that ordinance. So I'll end it there. I hope I was brief enough, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
I mean, you were close, close to briefing. Thank you.
By my standard, it was brief.
Yes, by your standards, that was very brief. Thank you. Thank you for your restraint.
Yeah, I think I beat the spread.
Wow. I guess that means you're long-winded, Patrick.
Was, uh, anything being changed about the, like, the, I think it was a two-acre threshold?
Yeah, and that was one of the areas where we had left it blank in terms of number of acres. And the U of M study analysis, they had some pretty significant differences of if they go from two acres to one acre to quarter acre and everything in between. So what we're going to want to do is to use their GIS data and run some scenarios just so that we, before we plug in an acreage, we can come to the planning commission and say, okay, here are some samples of acreage and what it looks like. And the planning commission can make decisions or can send us back and we can run other analyses on that. So right now, it's, it's at that two-acre threshold. It may move. We left it blank, but there's a lot of detail that we're able to go through now that the U of M class has done their study. They've given us a methodology that we can use to run those.
We didn't even notice. Yeah. I'm glad we started early. Thank you, Alan, for suggesting it and showing up only slightly late.
I like that how the people that brought it up are the ones who were late.
Yeah.
I was not here. I did not bring it up.
No, we, we, I'm not including you or her for your summer.
Yeah, that's on me. I, I should have emphasized it in the email just so that everyone knew and was reminded. But future six o'clock meetings, and if we have them, which hopefully we do, we'll emphasize those. If it's different than seven o'clock, we'll try to make a note to emphasize those in the email to the planning commissioners just, just as a reminder.
Yeah, and I understand from members of the public who are here that it was noticed in two different places at different times, too. And I'm not clear that there, the woman out front didn't know that we were coming at six. So she thought we were at seven.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at that in terms of our internal protocols and letting the rest of the township staff who need to know that we, we make sure that the meeting time, if it's different than seven, we let them know.
Yeah. Yeah. She was scurrying around to get water ready for us when we got here. But it's only tonight that we're, it's just tonight. Just tonight.
But I want to say for the record, I like six o'clock. For the workshops, I like six o'clock.
Especially the workshop.
But I like six.
I like six, and I like being late.
Noted.
You were always late for class in college, weren't you?
You got it.
Yeah, the next meeting is on the 9th of September. That'll be at seven o'clock. And then we can discuss at that point whether we want the meeting the week after, which is the 19th, scheduled as a work session, whether we want to have that one at six o'clock or whether we want to have it at seven, just depending on our schedules.
Okay. That sounds great. We have no new business. We have no miscellaneous. So do I hear?
Go to the township board.
Really?
Yeah, through the chair. I, I'll reserve the comment.